We will open the meeting. Sorry for the delay. Welcome everyone to the May 24th, 2021 Hadley Public School School Committee meeting. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjustments to the agenda. I know one of the adjustments we were hoping to do for Chris is to move Chris's Business Manager Reports up first in front of the presentations so he can eat dinner, not off camera and not not scarfing it down. Then, no, you have another meeting I know you need to get to, Chris. Any other adjustments to the agenda required?
I would suggest perhaps that the school committee consider reorganization at the end. Otherwise, you could potentially, I don't know that this would be the case, start with a chair and with a different chair. Just because after Chris, I also know that Carlos will be here to present to us on the field. So if you're comfortable doing your reorg as your last item of business, then we could go from business right into Carlos and do the reorg at the end.
That sounds fine.
Perfect.
I'm going to send Carlos the link.
Perfect.
Okay, great. So we'll move Business Manager Reports up first and we'll move 4A to the end to be after 4H. Alright, anything else? Okay, with that, we'll move then into Public Comment. Again, Public Comment in this digital environment, we are using the Zoom Raise Your Hand function. So you can raise your digital hand. We will see it. We will unmute you. And Public Comment has a three-minute time limit where we would welcome your comments. However, we do not interact or conduct any kind of Q and A during Public Comment, but we do like to hear from you. So we can consider that as we deliberate items tonight. And with that, I'll just pause. We do have some members of the public on tonight, and I will wait to see if anyone would like to participate in Public Comment. Going once? Okay, I see none. So we will move forward with our newly reorganized presentations and discussion items. We're actually going to move Business Manager Reports up next. So Chris, you are up with the expense, the grant and the revolving reports.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have my town meeting tonight in Ware. So unfortunately, it starts in about 45 minutes and I need to get there. So thank you for moving me up. So I have the expense report first. Really not a lot to discuss at this point in time. We still are looking in good shape. We have a couple more payrolls to go, including the big one in June where it pays for all of the summer salaries, but we do have sufficient funds to pay for that. We did most of the transfers of expenses to grants. You'll notice on the grants report that we pretty much used them all up at this point in time. So those are reflected on this report. The one thing that we still have been unable to get done is to move the expenses, the COVID expenses to the Town COVID Fund. I ran into some difficulties. They're still trying to check and make sure something with the state. I'm not really sure what that is, but there was some kind of issue they were having. So once they got that straightened out, I'm assuming we can just do the transfer. And so we'll have about an extra $77,000 or so that will show up on our report to spend. But again, I, you know, I have no concerns at this point in time. We have enough funds available to still finish the year. And, you know, we'll see what we have left at this point in time. Carlos just came into the meeting too. So just so you know. But I can answer any questions anyone might have regarding the expense report?
Nothing from me. No?
Okay, the next step that we'll do is go through all of the open purchase orders and we may, we'll most likely free up some additional funds there as well. What we do a lot of times at the beginning of the school year is put out blanket purchase orders. These are for places like Home Depot and Alston where Jeff buys all of his cleaning materials and stuff like that. Rather than write a purchase order every time he orders a roll of paper towels or something, we just do a blanket one at the beginning of the school year for say $5,000. And he just keeps purchasing against that. But as we get closer to the end of the year, he has enough materials to get him through the end of the school year and into the summer. So we can close those out and that will unencumber the money and it'll show up as more that's available. So that's really the next step that we're just beginning now. I also have the Grants Report. As you can see, there are, the majority of the grants are pretty much all spent. I'm just looking at the ones, the, if you look at the SIR 113 grant, there's still almost $24,000 to spend there, but that's a grant that we can roll over into the next fiscal year. So it's again to cover COVID expenses. So we'll just bring that into next year to help us out then. The 134 Digital Student Learning Devices, that was a new grant that we just got, I think about two weeks ago, and it's for $16,526. It shows there's nothing been spent. That was as of May 19th, which was last Wednesday when this report was prepared. Today, we put through a bunch of expenses that are going to use most of that grant. So that one will be spent down. We still have to transfer money to the Circuit Breaker Fund, but we can carry over quite a bit of that money into next year as well. And that's always good to have. Again, just in case we have an unforeseen tuition or something we need to pay for, it's good to have that money available to us. The 274 and 298 grants, those were grants we got probably in December they became available. And I know the 298 is going to be used to purchase iPads. So I can reach out to David and get those purchased. The 274 grant, we will also, you know, obviously make sure that this is spent by the end of the school year. And then again, we had a number of expenses in those last two grants, the Innovation Pathways and Early College, that are going to get more of those funds spent, but they actually happened again after this report was prepared. So next month, when you see this report, pretty much all of those grants at this point in time will be spent down to their full amounts. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the grant report?
The thing is, I heard we know more about the SR3 now. Is that correct?
We do. We got an email today. Yes, so we're getting about $436,000. It's a little less than we expected. But it's, you know, still obviously a decent amount. So we just need to apply for that, but it's it's pre-approved basically. So we just need to get the applications in. We have until October to do that.
And Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, right? That's, or Chris, that's no year money, right? It's not like it has to be spent out in any timeframe?
We have until
October 2024. I think it's FY 2024.
September of that year, I think is when it ends. So yeah, we have quite a bit of time.
Oh, so it's actually fiscal '25. Excuse me. Yeah, October 24th fiscal '25.
Okay, yeah.
We have three years, three years to spend it.
Three years, great. And then 20% needs to be spent on learning loss, is that right? But the other 80%, it's pretty flexible?
The, what I'm aware of is, although it could be confusing, SIR 2. I believe that in one of them, it was 10% for mental health supports and social and emotional supports. I don't know if it's 20% on learning loss, although we certainly are expected to make that a priority, which we would, we would identify. I mean, that would be that those two priorities would be first and foremost. And then beyond that, it's pretty flexible.
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, and there's, there's so many COVID grants that it's kind of hard to keep track off the top of your head, but I think it was $10,000 that was put aside for mental health.
Thank you, Chris. I said 10%. $10,000 set aside for mental health on SIR. That's correct.
And, and for the SR3, I just checked the email that Ann and I got today, and it is 20% for learning loss. Yes, so.
That's great.
Any other grant questions at all? Okay, then we have the Revolving Accounts Report. Not a lot of changes really to be seen here. Athletic stays the same, you know, as you can see, it really hasn't changed much since September. The Lunch Account is down, but we're not showing the revenues for the month of April. They weren't posted yet when I ran the reports. So we're looking at probably about $12,000 additional to be added. So the balance should be more around $35,000. Obviously, as we keep rolling forward in July and August is when we really catch up with these items. So the good thing is that we're at least going to finish the year with a positive balance. That's always nice to see. The Preschool Account is showing 60,000. Did say we would probably be showing close to $100,000. As you can see, we went down about $16,000 in the month of April. So if we did that again in the month of May, that would be 76. But then we have the big payroll in June that would be basically five paychecks. It would be the last check and then four summer checks for the two teachers in that program. So that's going to put us right around where we thought we would end up with. And then we can just transfer expenses out of that fund to bring the balance back up to the positive again. Student Activity Account, again, you know, obviously that just changes whenever we have student trips or or some kind of events and they either deposit the fundraising efforts for that or withdraw to pay for them. Hadley Kids really hasn't had a lot of activity all year other than some phone bills. And we just had a salary at the last payroll just because they're starting to do some planning to bring the program back. So some hours were spent there. But as you can see, it's, it's a couple hundred bucks. It really wasn't a lot that we've seen. And School Choice is gone on its way back up. I did the transfer in December to move some expenses to there. It's been growing since. We will have another transfer after June 30th. It will happen effective June 30th, but it'll happen sometime over the summer to bring the balance back up to a zero-ending balance. I would think it's, it's going to be probably another $300,000 that we move at that point in time. Any questions on those at all?
I was just going to ask while you're here, given town meeting just happened on Saturday, and I know some of the folks here attended. Just if you can kind of recap what, how those decisions and approvals impacted just our, our next fiscal year moving forward.
You mean in terms of the budget that was approved?
Yeah, and I think there was also, wasn't there, that was Hadley Kids in there too? In terms of a revolving account?
The only piece, so what's changed on the town side is that they had to, they no longer need the revolving fund for Hadley Kids. That revolving fund would live in the school department. They used to kind of be the custodian of that revolving fund. And also, there was a portion of, we paid for a portion, some hours a week of the Park and Rec Director to assist with the program, and that won't be happening going forward. So that, if that's what you're asking about, and I want the public to make, to be clear that it wasn't a vote to, Hadley Kids will exist next year. All it was, was that the revolving account will be something that you see in our school revolving accounts, where you see it here. And any money that for Hadley, for the after-school program that was in a revolving account on, on the town side would be transferred into revolving account on the school side.
Thanks, Amy. I think we've covered that at a previous meeting, but that action essentially allowed that to move forward with that in the coming year.
Correct.
Great. Any questions for Chris? Alright, Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Buck at your other meeting.
Thanks a lot. I'll need it.
Okay. Alright, let's go back to the beginning here of the agenda. Alright, so now we're going to move then into Presentations and Discussion Items, the first one being the update on Phase One of the Hopkins Academy Athletic Fields with Carlos from Berkshire Design Nieto Mate. And I know Carlos is on, so.
Two Carloses.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one, but I'm going to ask one to unmute.
Yes, and I'll explain quickly here. The reason why I have the other one is because we have, and I think you, do you have to allow me to start my video too?
Yes, I think we did.
Yeah. Oh, let me see if I can. Okay, it might be, so to explain quick, oh, there we go. Now you got me.
Yes, hello.
Now, now I'm a human being, not just a voice in the void. The other Carlos is if I need to share a plan or something, this is my laptop that you're seeing me with. But over here, I have the desktop where I have all my CAD and I have all the drawings. And that's the other Carlos. So if I needed to share something, I would, I would need to use that other one. I don't think we will need, but if, if people need, need more explanation, I can pull up the plans and we can talk about things. I, so in essence, I mean, we're, we're getting to the end of the actual construction project. And for the Hopkins Academy, the majority, I would say 90% or 99% of things have been already installed. It's the process of, of getting the grass to grow, you know, to, to the appropriate size so that I can accept it for the contractor. And there were some other loose ends that were being dealt with. So that's, you know, the part of the project itself for, for, for us, it's, it's, we're at the end, tail end of the project at this point. I think you also wanted me here to explain right that we are at the end. There were some issues at the beginning of the season in spring where we had some water pooling and some drainage issues. And there was some talk also about, or about the grass and cutting the grass. So I wanted to kind of focus on, on that. And and again, in general, the project is, it's at the tail end of this, and we're trying to just finalize, wrap up some things so the contractor can, we can accept the project and the contractor can, can finish. On the drainage part, so in the early spring, I was called and to let me know that there were some issues with ponding. I was out there before those issues were, I mean, before those weeks that we had some more rain and whatnot. And just to look at how the site looked and went out to the, with a contractor and take a look at things, make sure that they had de- winterized the irrigation system. And at that point, the grass was still not, you know, we still needed more growth. And the irrigation system was set up, and I'm giving you a little background of what happened before. Irrigation system was set up so that it would irrigate every morning at 5:00 and it would run through its programming. So then we had a couple of weeks that was much more wetter weather. And also, we had, you know, it was early spring or mid-spring at that point. And that's, I was called, I believe I had a meeting on the 14th. So I was called probably a week before that, a couple of days before that. Again, there was ponding and Chris DeJardine's calling me just to make sure that I went by there and take a look, and then to just sit down with them and, and talk about what the conditions of the park were. Then we met out on the site, and actually, I went the day before, because when I heard there was funding, I couldn't wait till the day of the meeting. So I wanted to go out there and just take a look at what was going on. When I went out there, the ponding had subsided. There were some moist areas, but it wasn't like we had standing water at that point. But there was evident that there had been some drainage issues. When I went the next day and we met all together and, you know, it was explained to me where the areas I had kind of, that there were ponding and the other concerns about the infield mix being a little spongy at the beginning of the season, also being wet, especially in the baseball field. So after that, I sat down and talked with the contractor, talked with Jeff from, from the school. And I came up and I believe that Ann shared my, kind of my, I wouldn't say recommendations that, that we wanted to, to hit. In the drainage, what I found was the, there were a couple of things that needed to be done that I, I think are going to improve the situation. One of them was that we had erosion control around all the drainage structures on the site because we wanted to prevent any silt to go into the drainage and then eventually make it out to where it outfalls, where the water outfalls for the drainage. By having those, they're literally dams right in front of each one of the catch basins. And that's our sole drainage system. So if you limit the amount of water that can go through those, obviously, you're going to have issues with ponding and you're going to have issues with humidity, especially in an air, in a time when the year where you got ground that's pretty saturated, you got a lot of water. So any extra water that goes there will definitely pond. So my, our first thing that I told the contractor, and at this point, it can be done because the grass is, there's enough grass, we're not going to have major erosion, was to take that out and to reseed those areas, because obviously, once you take the erosion control out, there's nothing growing underneath. So they needed to go back and reseed those areas, fill any gaps that were happening around those catch basins. There was some settlement in some areas that also prevented some water to go to the right place. So we asked them to fill those areas that had settled. And again, that's not a surprise in a project where the soils are very friable, they're fairly thin, and you've moved all the dirt. So now we've, you've compacted everything, the winter has come by, and then you, you start getting some compaction issues that you have to come back and fill. So contractor is doing that too. So that was the first thing that I observed was that you still had the erosion control out there. So we need to take that out to make sure that any water that goes can go to the right catch basins, and then any depressions can be filled so that the water can go to the right place. The second thing that we talked about was reprogramming and sitting down with Jeff, making sure that the contractor explained to Jeff how to reprogram the irrigation system. Because another thing that I'm, that I suspect was an issue too, was that we had a running irrigation system running every morning at 5:00 in the morning. It does have a rain sensor, so it will not irrigate when it's raining. But if it rains an hour before the irrigation cycle starts and the rain stops, it will irrigate. So you might have the, the fields totally, you know, packed with water, you know? It could have rained for three days straight and your irrigation system is going to keep turning on as long as it's not raining at the moment and needs to turn on. So that's what a rain, the rain sensor does. So there is a little management that has to happen with that, meaning, you know, obviously, the irrigation in a place like this, this size, you're going to have areas that are going to be a little bit drier, soils are going to be a little different. So you have to adjust each one of the sections. And what, that's why the irrigation system is set up in, in all these, you know, areas so that you can, each one of those areas you can isolate and you can either irrigate less, turn off an area, or you can do it, you know, you can change it so that you can make it so that you get less water. So that was the second thing that I, you know, obviously, it had been raining, but it had been irrigating all these days. Plus, we were in spring, which is the time where we have the highest groundwater. In addition to that, you, we had a rain, you know, rain events a couple of, for a week. So having all that moisture there, that, you know, it doesn't help. I mean, if you're irrigating for 15, 20 minutes in the morning in that same area. So that was the second recommendation. Those two, as far as I know, because I called, I followed up with Jeff afterwards to make sure that the contractor had gone with him and reprogrammed, I called the contractor to make sure he had done that. And my understanding is that those two things, taking the irrigation, the erosion control out and dealing with the, any dips that, or any areas that had settled, that they were going to deal with that. And also with the irrigation, they reprogrammed it with Jeff so that, and the contractor's more than happy, you know, he's more than willing to come back and, and reprogram it and work with Jeff on that. These systems are, they're spanking, brand spanking new. They have a lot of buttons. They have a lot of screens. So, you know, you, you need to go through it a couple of times. It's like us with Zoom, we have to go through it a couple of times before we, we, you know, we are comfortable with it. So, and again, the contractor is more than, more than happy to do that. He's a local contractor. He can, he can come around and help Jeff with that. So I think on those two things are, first of all, I think those two things are going to definitely have some issue, you know, cause some of these issues. The other thing is that I, they're, they're taken care of already as far as I, I believe, and I'll follow up with contractor and Jeff again with those. The second part that I put in there on, on the, on my notes was any additional drainage. Obviously, when, you know, ponding was out there, the first thing that was, came up was, hey, there's, you know, we, we installed this drainage, we, do we need more drainage? Does, did the contractor did something wrong that the drainage is not working? And you know what? I went out there and double-checked. And the drainage is working as it should in the sense that water is going to those low spots that we created so that we could catch that water with catch basins or drains. We do, we don't have a lot of those in the site because of some reasons, and I'm going to explain that in a minute. But as far as we can tell at this point, everything, the grading seems to be right. Things have been graded the right way. There's been some settlement, like I said, and that is normal in a area this size, even after compacting, especially with the soils that we have there. So things have settled a little bit, but nothing is way off that I could say that we have a catch basin that's a foot higher than the rest. Or we have some, you know, areas that are just obvious that there are low, low spots, you know, that are, that have major settlements or something like that. So I think in general, everything has been graded the right way. And we're working with, you know, with, with the plan that we had. This area in particular is, this, these fields are, are challenging. The site is pretty challenging to start off with. And I, you know, from the beginning, this has been a process for a long time, but, um, so we have several things that are going against us in regards to water in this site. We have, we are in floodplain to start off with. So when we graded this site, I, we could not add any more soils. We, we, we can't fill in this site. And it's in a per, a foot per foot basis, meaning I cannot fill anymore between contour line 199 and I can't fill from 99 to 98 and I can't fill. So it's not like I can fill a lot on one side and make a big hole on the other, and that's going to fix it. I have to actually match it foot per foot of grading. So what that means on a site like this is that I can't really raise anything, so everything needs to go down. So if I want to drain things, it's not like I'm raising one side and then letting things drain. It's more like I have my natural elevation and I need to bring that down so I can bring the water to a spot that's low. That leads to the fact that we have, in addition to being in floodplain, so that limits us on how much we can grade, how much we can raise the site, is that we have really high groundwater in the site. We have groundwater that's in spring in the, in the height moments. In some areas, it's as shallow as 12 inches and it goes down to maybe 24 inches. But we have water that's fluctuating early in the season in around 12 inches below the surface. This is also the lowest spot in this area. So most of our fields are draining from, the agricultural fields are draining, and, and that happens on the ground on the water table. It's just moving, a lot of water is moving this way. That's why we have the ditch at that corner. That's the lowest point. That's where all the water goes to that area. So we have, we're, we are in floodplain, so it's, we can't really raise our elevation. And then we have re, high groundwater. So I can't, like I was saying, my strategy was to create low points, but I can't really bring that down significantly enough. You know, I can't really go way down on that drop because I'll be in floodplain. I will be basically bringing, I'll be, sorry, in the water table. I will be exposing the water out. So it was, it is a balance on this site. It's a large site and the grades have to be relatively flat, you know, for plain fields and whatnot. So with all that said, I, I feel like we should, I mean, there is an opportunity of maybe doing some extra drainage. Additional drainage would not be covered by this contract because it wasn't the responsibility of the contractor. It wasn't part of the design. Additional drainage, when I say this, would be what's called underdrain. So it would be drains that are actually buried on the ground which would handle some of this water and, and drain out. Those drains need to go to structure. So what we have right now is the framework of what we would need if we needed underdrains. We have a system of four or five catch basins that now if we needed to add more drainage, we could connect to those. If we were, you know, so if we had started from the beginning with other drains, we would have needed these four or five big structures that we have out there right now. So just so you understand that we are in step one of drainage, if we needed to go to the next step would be underdrains, but it wouldn't be, we're starting from scratch. It means that we're adding to the system that we already have there. My feeling right now, and underdrains, it's not cheap. It's expensive because you have to have pipe, you have to have stone, and this area is really big. So that was not, you know, within the budget of what we were working originally. So we were working with the drains that we, we could afford and we could work, make this work. you know, within the budget of what we were working originally. So we were working with the drains that we, we could afford and we could work, make this work. My feeling right now is that I would wait, one last thing. You know, grass had not really developed its final root systems here. That takes a whole year, you know, it takes mowing, constant mowing during the year. Those, the grassroots system is going to be when it's healthy, it should be about twelve inches deep. You know, it's, it's, it's a lot of, of surface area. The grass itself is a way to drain some of that water. I mean, the grass is going to absorb it and also there's transpiration happening with the grass. So when you have really early grass, it can't transpire as much and it can't absorb as much. But I'm fairly sure as we keep moving forward and this grass gets established, we'll have a better, it'll have better capacity to, to dry up that site, that site. So my feeling is that on the drainage, I would wait till we get to next spring. We are doing all these additional things that we hadn't done, meaning we took the erosion control out. We're going to have established grass for the next time. We'll have an irrigation system that's not going to turn on at the beginning of the spring because we know now that we can't, that field should not be watered at all in the beginning of the spring. And we will, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about the infill mix areas that were spongy, the contractor is going to come back within this contract and he's going to reroll that, recompacted and add any extra material he needs. So that is going to be taken care of by this contract. So my feeling is that we should wait and see how, how it pans out for next spring. If you still are having major issues with drainage, which again, I suspect that by taking the erosion control, that's going to take a lot of that extra water that was there there. Then I think that's the time where you should be thinking of extra drainage. But I wouldn't jump into it right now and try to get extra drainage right now in there if you haven't seen how this is going to pan out for next season. When the, you know, the fields are going to be more finished, grass is going to be more finished and our drainage is going to be, and the erosion controls, it's not going to be there anymore. So that's where we are with, with the drainage and where I, my recommendation or what I think about it. There's also a, we, and I just want to touch base back on that. It's just the infill mixes, which is again, because of the moisture that was there, the infill mix was spongy, it hadn't, it didn't feel compacted. And we've asked the contractor to come back, reroll that infill mix and then add any additional infill mix. He's not going to do that immediately. That infill mix that he bought is from out east, is from a distributor out in, I want to say closer to the Cape, where they have the sandy, even sandier material that they use. He has another project that he will need infill mix. So he asked us if we could wait till he has that project, you know, he goes to get that material. A good way to control that too is that project is with us too. It's for Springfield, but it's a Berkshire Design Project and we are, so we know when he's getting more extra material and whatnot, and he, it is true, he will be finishing some ballfields out there. So it, it felt like it was, it made sense to, for the contractor and for us, but for the contractor to wait till he did one trip and brought extra material. So he's talked about coming in and rerolling and bringing the material. He should do those two things at the same time. So he's going to come in and do that. And that, my belief is going to be in a couple of weeks from now. He's still not, not ready to go and get that material. That's not going to impact anything in regards to the playability or anything on the fields and it's going to be even drier. So it's going to be better for compaction. So, so that's the, I guess, the, the update on the, in the infill mix and, and that sponiness and compaction that he was, that he needs to come back and do again. If you have any questions, I mean, you could have interrupted me at any point. I, I like talking, so. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me.
Thanks Carlos. So Annie and Paul, I, did you guys have any comments? Paul, I know you've been closely involved with this project.
No, I, I don't. And other than thank you Carlos for your diligence here and looks like we're close. I know there's mowing that's important. So, so once we accept the fields, I know that's, there's a formal acceptance, then all of this becomes our responsibility. So Annie, it sounds like Jeff's been looped in. A little turn to the school administration to take over the mowing and make sure that sprinklers are working properly.
Correct. Yes. Yes. Thank you Carlos for coming out to meet with us, for walking the fields on your own, for walking the fields with us and for all of your recommendations. Which the email where you summarized all of your recommendations that you now went over publicly was shared with the school committee on the document. So thank you for that. And I just want to reiterate, you're suggesting that we wouldn't, you would not recommend one that we look at if we are going to expand the drainage, that we don't do that until phase two or at least until next spring. And I have to go get a glass of water before I just pass out and choke, but talk amongst yourselves. I'll be right back.
The role.
And Carlos, the other thing too, if you can chime in too, talk about the lilacs that were going to be planted.
Sorry, I, I did not hear.
The lilacs and the buddy neighbor.
They're, they're already planted.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're already planted. They actually did that probably a couple of weeks back. They're flowering. They look great. I don't, I haven't, I haven't heard from the neighbor, but we, when we spaced them and everything, he was out there and, you know, he saw us do that. So I, I I haven't heard, that sometimes means that it's good.
I'll go check it out. Thanks Carlos.
Yeah, no, definitely. Yeah. And, and on, I, I correct with, and interpretation, I think we, we should just let it, let the fields kind of settle, you know, wait till next season and, and then if we still have some drainage issues there, we'll deal with those at that point. But I, I, I don't think you should go ahead and, and start investing on extra drainage until you can see how, how this goes. I talked to Jeff too, you know, in, in regards to coordination, for instance, if next season, you know, can, can he, you know, if you have a field that's really dry and you have a field that's a little wetter in the spring, could you start on one side and, and then move to the other side, you know? All these things, all the management that you can do within, you know, your facility can help. Early spring is, it's hard. Baseball is hard because you got, early spring is, you got normally pretty wet, you know, wet weather, especially the last two years has been pretty wet weather in the spring and for springtime. You have high groundwater. So it's the time of the year that's harder. So it, it's, again, the management of how you can deal with what you have also helps, you know, throughout the process. So I, again, I, and I talked to Jeff also about grass mowing and we've talked about it and I, I believe that he's, you know, that he's more than clear on, on what it takes and, and I think I was worried at the beginning that he didn't have enough help to do it because it's a large, really large site. And it, you don't realize that until you start mowing. That all of a sudden you have twice the amount and that amount, you know, multiplies in time and all of a sudden you have, you don't have time to do enough mowing, you know? This is not the first place I've seen that happen, but a, after we've had a bunch of conversations, it seems like Jeff has had, he has new help that's coming in and helping him with that. And, and that he's going to be more than capable of dealing with it. Once, once we, you know, the contractor is done. So I think all that stuff is, is, is good. Also, the, he was having some issues. Again, those areas that were moist, it was hard for him to mow, but now that, that's, all that area is going to dry. I mean, it's, it's dried up already quite a bit. So he's not going to have that issue anymore.
And Annie, I think it's time for us to get in front of CPA, just to close out the project and but I looked at the town meeting. I need, I need to maybe get with the town manager to find when I, I can get on their calendar because I, I don't see any upcoming meetings for them.
That would probably be your best bet. Go through the, we can, you or both of us can go through the town administrator and see when we might give them that, a status update and then probably start planning and thinking toward phase two.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Thanks Carlos.
Thank you.
Thanks Carlos.
Again, feel free to contact me. Paul, you know, you, you got my email. So if you have any questions or anything comes up, you can just email me and yeah, we'll, we'll keep moving forward the project and, and getting this wrapped up.
Great.
Thanks. Thank you.
Great. Well, we are super excited to be using the fields, hopefully this Friday for an outdoor graduation. Let's hope there's no rain and there's no pooling of water.
Yes.
All right. Great. We're going to move then to the next topic, school start time proposal and schedule for surveying staff, students and parents. Annie?
Yes. So what we've done to date is send out a, a survey, just a very quick survey to the Hopkins Academy staff to get their feedback. We sent it to all staff. We received thirty-one responses. And of those thirty-one responses, just want to pull this up here, of those thirty-one responses, the majority, of course, because that's the majority of employees, but the majority were unit aid members, teachers, counselors, related service providers. Twenty-one respondents were teachers. Seven respondents were educational support professionals. We heard from two of our food services staff and one of our admin, support admin assistants. We simply asked the question, what would, what, which choice do you believe might be in the best interest of students? Instruction beginning at eight forty-five, and I'll explain more as to why we suggested that, eight forty-five and ending at three fifteen or keeping the current schedule. Of respondents, seventeen indicated that beginning at eight forty-five and three fifteen, that they thought that was a good idea and fourteen respondents. So it's almost evenly split, about fifty-five percent, forty-five percent. Fourteen respondents said keep the current schedule. And then they went on to provide in some cases, some comments. And some of the reasons that people indicated, some of the concerns that they had, some people just said, great idea and, and and kind of echoed what some of the CDC recommendations are, but others asked some questions about athletics. And I really want to be clear, this isn't about people putting athletics before academics, but recognizing that students do more than, than, I mean, they have very full lives. And so especially in a town like Hadley, do we have to think about fall sports? When it gets dark earlier, we don't have lights. What does that mean for sports like soccer? In the fall? And what does it mean? One person asked a question of when there's not a whole lot of daylight, will that have adverse effects on students' moods in the afternoon? And I'll just explain a little bit of why we threw this particular time out. So there are many options. The least disruptive option is to almost try to leave the elementary school alone in terms of schedule and really only tweak with the high school schedule. In some districts, we've talked about, North Hampton is looking at around or about an eight-thirty start for high school. Amherst is looking at about a nine AM start next year for high school. So a lot of places just end up flipping their schedules with their older kids and younger kids. Because they can't, they don't have the option of putting all grades on one, what we call a single tier of busing. So what happens now, a two-tiered busing system means those drivers get on the road at sixish in the morning and start collecting high school students, right? Shortly thereafter, they get to the yard, they start going about and trying to get high school students after they, they do all of their safety work in the bus yard. And they drop off the high school and then they do the same run more or less. They do a similar route and they pick up elementary students. So that's two tiers. And a single tier, you just route everybody. If all your schools start pretty close, not at the exact same time, you drop off at one school and then you go to the next school. So if you leave Hadley Elementary's schedule more or less alone, you would drop off at Hadley Elementary School first and then you'd go drop off at Hopkins Academy. You could drop off at Hopkins Academy first, dropping them off closer to the eight-thirty mark and then go over to the elementary school and start the elementary school later. So what we were going to do after our meeting last month, and this is extremely important that the public understands this and of course, just to reiterate to students and faculty and staff, one, we, we have done one survey right now with Hopkins Academy staff. That's it. So we're very interested in hearing from families and also from students. And any decision that if the school committee were to determine that this is something that we would very much, they'd be, you'd be interested in moving forward with, that can't happen without negotiating with the Hadley Education Association because this does constitute a change in working conditions and change in working conditions must be impact bargained. So this is not a unilateral change. I'm not suggesting that the school committee thought they could make this unilateral change or wants to. But I just want folks to understand that not only are we looking for input, we're not done getting input, just started, but also it would have to be bargained. So I wanted to hear from the school committee and then my next steps, of course, would be to survey families, similar, very kind of straightforward survey. And, and students, Hopkins Academy students, or to take any other actions that the school committee would like me to take in order to help you guys have a conversation about this. I will remind people, I know that we had a meeting about single tier busing. Again, that means students in grades K through twelve could be on the same bus. And there were some concerns in the past about what that means for younger children. So we talked at the last meeting. Several school committee members suggested the idea of having bus monitors on each bus. We do have bus monitors. This is something that COVID brought about, so that's, we're happy to continue that to make sure we have bus monitors. We talked about, it hasn't been easy for anyone recently to find a lot of employees, but just like we have hired very responsible seniors from time to time to work in our after-school program. We could certainly, you know, advertise to some of our responsible older students whom we hired to work in our after-school program. And I spoke with the transportation coordinator and she said that there is nothing to prohibit students from using devices and headphones. We have a lot of those now, another upside to COVID. And so perhaps encouraging students while they're on the bus to, you know, to have a device and headphones if there was concerns about younger children being privy to conversations that older children might have. And those are just some of the ideas we've had to date and happy to listen to the school committee's conversation or take any suggestions from the school committee about recommended next steps.
Thanks Annie. Yeah, it was, it was interesting to look at the results of the survey and you know, it's fairly split, right? Almost evenly between the change versus keeping the current schedule. And the comments were very interesting. It was nice to be able to at least get a little bit more insight into some of those ratings. And so I guess a question is, I mean, I, I do think this is worth, an idea worth exploring, but I, I would definitely encourage the gathering of additional input in that exploration. So you mentioned families, students getting their feedback. I think it's nice for folks to have the framing of what other schools that are close by are doing. And how, I mean, for schools that have already done this, how sports or clubs are addressed or what would be the, the thought around that in terms of, you know, we're not necessarily going this alone. Right? So I think that would be helpful framing and the ideas around the buses as well in terms of understanding that. But you know, I know we've had presentations from the medical perspective and kids health, the pediatric perspective in terms of the health benefits and I think those are worth considering. So, you know, it's something that I, I, I would like to hear more about other sources of input to be able to explore this more fully. What do you guys think?
Well, I agree with you Heather. I appreciated seeing the comments. I I think the data are pretty clear around the nation in terms of the research that shows that the later start time is net positive for students. And while it might be darker in the evening time, it is lighter in the morning, a little bit less depressing to wake up to the darkness and climb onto a dark bus down a slippery driveway in the winter. So takes one half a dozen the other, I guess. I I've always longed for stadium lights on our fields. So maybe that's a phase three, that we have some stadium lights that allow for soccer lighting. But I, you know, more practically speaking, how have our neighboring school districts, which seem to have really taken this post-COVID opportunity to have the later start time, how have they managed some of the issues that we raise here in our district?
I, I will let you know that athletic director Eric Sednik is speaking to the two ADs on either side of us. Now, we don't play a number, they're different divisions, so I'm, I'm not. Now, we don't play a number, they're different divisions, so I'm not going to do justice to this. But we don't play a lot of sports against those teams because they're typically in a different decision, division. Although we have a number of co-ops, right? With, I think, swimming and lacrosse and hockey and football. With those, I'm probably missing one with those districts. So we will be impacted about, on the athletics front regardless, because our co-ops are with those districts. Give me just one moment. I'll have to let Tom know I'm in a meeting when he walks in the back door, that'll just take me a second. So, I, and then I also thought it might be helpful if, this went to the staff, and I'm not sure that the public is completely aware of this. So I just want to read the mandate that the state legislature, the task force studying this has. So the state legislature has convened a task force, which shall, and it goes through a number of things about researching start times and looking at the effect of start time on student health. And then the last thing it says, and this is part of their mandate. The task force will suggest that a later school day start time is beneficial to student learning. So I, I will say again, it appears to me that it is not a question of if we will be changing our start, but it is simply a matter of when.
It's an interesting mandate to a task force, so they're not, so that they're tasked with coming up with predetermined recommendation. But I, I agree with you, Humira, the data that I've seen are pretty compelling, right? And I think we do need to, I think that's why North Hampton and Amherst have shifted. So if we can hear these concerns from the families and from the teachers and find ways to mitigate them to the extent we can. I think it really, from my perspective, this is the way, obviously, it sounds like the state's going in our neighboring schools. So how do we, how do we get there and make it work for us? Knowing that we're a smaller school district, that bus expenses are expensive for us, six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. So we don't want to increase that if we can, we can avoid it.
So I, I agree with everything that's said thus far. And I think I was probably one of the most cautious when we talked about this the last time. And, you know, as I start to look at information available and surrounding districts and medical opinions, I, I, you know, I think it's, it's definitely worth further exploration. And I'm wondering, you know, and I, I also think it's good to get further feedback. So this was a great starting place with AJ, and I agree with Heather, and I know you suggested to Annie, getting further feedback from parents. But maybe, maybe framing it a little bit, and I find that your superintendent emails always seem to be a great place to frame it. So maybe, you know, giving, giving the community the heads up that a survey is going to be coming to seek their feedback, but also providing them with information, relevant information, prior to the survey coming out of the positive benefits, what we're looking into, giving them a little bit of background of why this is coming about. You know, and where we may be headed as a state. Giving that, that information upfront, allowing them time to read that ahead of time before we send out a survey might be useful. So they can make an informed decision while they're filling out a questionnaire. And maybe it's less alarming that way, you know, that this is coming back up.
That's a great idea, I had some of it. When I sent the survey to the staff, there was a lot of that kind of in the background, but some people just skipped that description, right? And I also, though, had an email in which the survey was embedded that laid out what I read to you, the mandate from the task force, what's happening in neighboring communities, and a link to the CDC website where it states and highlights that they recommend that middle and high schoolers do not start school before eight thirty in the morning.
Right.
So I can share that with families too in advance and then send out the survey.
And advance will just give them some time to read, because you're right, a lot of people are probably not going to click through that or take that time, they're going to answer that survey. So if they can at least be prepared for that to come, they might even do a little research on their own too, so.
I, I'll just add that I, I agree with everybody, I think, and I think it's a great idea. I also think that if it's something that's going to happen, if it's going to come from the state that we need to do it, it's, it's good to get out in front of this and learn as much as we can about our community and what the feedback is. And then also it gives us the opportunity to think of ways that we can maybe make other changes within the schools to, to adjust for this, this time change.
Great, so Annie, I know this, this isn't an action item, but more, we, you know, appreciate the update. Appreciate seeing the results of this preliminary survey. And it sounds like you've got some feedback for at least being able to move forward with some additional getting, gathering of feedback with the framing perhaps that Tara mentioned. Okay, anything else on this topic?
No, not for me, thank you.
All right, school districts adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yes, I am happy to start, thank you, Annie. I, as many of my colleagues on this committee, I'm a part of the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees mailing list. Happened to notice a thread about a number of school districts coming forth indicating that they had changed the name of their Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it was not something that I was really aware of before this thread. And I was really surprised to see so many districts in our area, as well as throughout the state, passing it. Not only their, the, the school committees taking the lead on making that change, but also in some instances, passing it town-wide. Just a quick list of, of the, some of the towns, very, very diverse, small and large, urban rural. I'm going to give you a sense of what those towns are, Acton, Boxborough, Amherst, Arlington, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Frontier, Grafton, Great Barrington, Harvard, Mashpee, Maynard, Melrose, Milton, Natick, Needham, Newton, North Middlesex, North Hampton, Pittsfield, Sharon, Somerville, and Wayland. Of those schools, the cities that adopted this, you know, citywide would include Amherst, Arlington, Brookline, Cambridge, Great Barrington. Hang on one second, and then Somerville. Also Newton, sorry, Newton, North Hampton, and Somerville. Just to give you a sense of this is, is seeming to be something that is is going to continue. The state, I think the state has passed. I'm not sure, actually, I don't think the state has done anything with respect to Indigenous Peoples' Day, but fourteen states around the nation have. And it's something that I wanted to just put out there for my school committee colleagues to think about as something to consider for our school committee, passing the change of language to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thanks, Humira. Do we know from the select board perspective, like from a town perspective, whether this has been a discussion item? Or thought about in terms of a town-wide decision?
I do not believe that it has been discussed. Perhaps it's something that the DEI committee has contemplated, I'm not exactly sure about that either. But I always, I like to think that the school committee takes a leadership role on matters related to equity and inclusion. And so I'm happy to have us have that conversation and influence some forward-leaning thoughts in those other parts of our town.
I would also add to that, thank you so much, Humira, for sharing all that information from Mass Association of School Committees. And if this is something that the school committee would like to give further consideration to, it may also be nice to invite some of the student leaders at Hopkins who may have an interest in this as well. And I'm not suggesting then that the school committee has to wait if they want to do something, but there may be student groups, I don't know, I could find that out. But there are certain, there may be some student groups who also have an interest in this topic that may want to talk with the school committee and/or partner with the school committee on recommendations. I don't know that, but I'd be happy to find that out, although that would bring us a little bit closer to the fall, most likely. I don't, I think they're thinking on getting out of school right now, but.
So, and I, I would love to hear from the students and their perspectives on that. I'm just trying to think, what, what is this? I understand it's a statement, but just realistically, we would, when we talk about that holiday, we would just change, talk about it in a different way. It's an educational opportunity to talk about what that really means, I assume. Yeah, I definitely would be interested in talking about this further.
Yeah, I agree.
Me too, I'm in support.
Absolutely.
I can, just to get a sense of, I can reach out, not, not this week, Hopkins is a little busy this week, but I can reach out next week too. I don't want to deviate that, their attention, divert their attention rather from graduation. But I can certainly reach out to Ms. Camuso and find out which advisors may have had these conversations. Students may have raised this conversation, I think I've seen it as a statement in the hallway on the walls of Hopkins, which is also what's making me think about this. So certainly I can find out. And I know that the students always appreciate it when the school committee partners with them around leading the district, whether it's changing, you know, updating dress code or some of our previous graduation robes and things like that. The students have always appreciated doing some of this work with the school committee.
Annie, it might be interesting to hear what your superintendent group, whether they're talking about this at all as well. You have a listserv or?
Yeah, I can certainly find that out.
Curious. And I appreciate, Humira, you pulling together the, the districts and the, the background on that. I missed that on the MASC listserv, so glad you picked up on that.
Thanks, Heather, yeah, I'm, I, it's, I think it's a welcome change in these communities where the conversation has been, has been occurring. And I think it would be a really positive thing for Hadley.
Great, thank you. Okay. Next, we have some job descriptions and some roles. So we have special education administrator search and job description first, Annie?
So what we are hoping, we have the position posted. And there were just some changes, this has been reviewed by the school committee's attorney and by the Dupre Law Offices, the job description. There aren't significant changes from the previous job description, except the previous job description did indicate that the director of special education would essentially be the superintendent's designee in the superintendent's absence, and that was called out in the job description. So we have changed that because we haven't yet hired somebody for this position. And then the timeline is, as I said, the job position has been posted on school spring. The deadline for applications is June first. We will be screening applications June second, third, and fourth. And during the week of June seventh, contacting semifinalists or people who would be granted an initial interview to schedule interviews and assign a performance task. And the screening committee will be the principals, the superintendent, and a liaison that I would request that I would designate. And the reason I'm saying that is, as you know, if the school committee chair designates a liaison, then that subjects all meetings that that liaison participates in to open meeting law. And it's not that we don't want to be transparent, but we don't want to be caught with a problem with posting and having to cancel meetings. So I do know that Tara Bruger has in the past assisted us here. And I know that she's very familiar with our special education programs. And she, you know, Tara can certainly speak to what other, what other experiences she might bring to assisting us again. But the screening committee, the principals, the superintendent, and liaison from the school committee, that's just reviewing paper. And then the interview committee, we've asked folks who are interested from Unit A, which are all of our credential professionals from Unit D. So we're looking for, in the case of the first interviews, one principal, superintendent, a Unit A member from Hopkins Academy and from Hadley Elementary School. And an educational support professional. And then from that group, we would narrow that group down and bring finalists for another interview, another performance task. And the finalist committee, we're recommending superintendent, the school committee liaison, and a building principal. And these would be the folks that were recommended by the interview committee. The initial interviews to take place the week of June fifteenth. The final interviews, finalists, the week of June twenty first. And then to bring the candidate before the school committee to approve and finalize the appointment. So that is the proposed timeline.
Got it, so do you need the, the school committee liaison to be appointed tonight?
So I am recommending, if Tara is interested, I am recommending, unless there's any objection from the school committee, I would like to appoint Tara, but Tara will certainly let you speak to that.
Yeah, I would be very interested, and I would like to, I've served on past interviews with special education. And I did partake in the seat pack and leading up the seat pack for a while prior to coming on to school committee. And I do have personal experience in the special education department. So unless somebody has a really big objection, I would, I would like to take part in the process.
No objection, I am thankful that you have the time and interest and are willing to do it, we're happy to have you do it.
Tara, you are most qualified, like the most qualified of all of us to, on all matters related to special education, I would assert. So I'm really happy to hear that you are willing to invest the time in this.
Thank you, Tara. And I noticed that I don't have for an action item, the approval of this job description. But because I did say to you that I did change that language and it was reviewed by the attorney about the designee, I would ask if the school committee would be willing to approve it, just so everything is squared away and that the existing job description is approved by the school committee.
Got it, is there a motion to approve the job description for the administrator for special education and student services?
Second.
All in favor? All right, great.
Great.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Next job description we have is district cook job description.
So thank you, yes, thank you so much to Ms. Zach, Diane Zach. She is recommending a reorganization of food service. And currently we have two head cooks, one in each building, each receives a stipend. One of our, our head cook at Hadley Elementary School is retiring this year. And Ms. Zach has recommended that we have a food services director and we have a district cook, that's what she would like. And, and then maintain, so we would not fill the head cook position at Hadley Elementary. We would have a district cook that's responsible for ensuring that both sites are following all the meals, assisting Diane. And then the prep and line staff, that configuration would not change. All of those positions and hours would remain the same. Diane believes that this, this organization will allow the food services department to be more effective and more efficient. Will present the opportunity for them to serve hot breakfasts on occasion, something that students are interested in and have asked for. And in doing this, it will save the town, potentially save the town one benefits package. Because we would have one district cook rather than, and not hire the person who's not replaced the position that is leaving Hadley Elementary School. So Ms. Zach put together the job description and we had the attorney review the job description. And that's what you have for approval this evening.
Great, appreciate the, the thought Diane put into it and the efficiencies that can be gained, she knows it best. So any questions or comments on this one? Okay, is there a motion to approve the job description for Hadley District Cook?
Seconded.
All in favor? Great. All right, and then we have one more, instructional technology specialist teacher job.
Correct. So in 2012, I think halfway through, no, I take that back, halfway through 2013, I started in 2014. So in about October of 2013, Humira probably remembers this. After the town so graciously invested a tremendous amount of money in upgrading the technology for our schools and our district, the school committee created two stipended positions, a technology coach in each building and a technology integration specialist. And there is some, when you look at the job descriptions, there, there is a considerable degree of overlap in those positions because they, all three of those positions really focus on coaching teachers, consulting with teachers, and providing professional development and resources. At the outset, that was incredibly important. As you know, I believe that the Warren article, I think you invested in one full swoop about $150,000, and there have been additional investments since. And it was a tremendous learning curve. Again, this predates me by about six to eight months. It's a huge learning curve. And since then, Maureen Tumenes, who's been the instructional technology specialist, has done a wonderful job. And she really, with the support of Helping Hearts and other great generous groups in the, in the community, she built up our STEAM lab, the Science Tech Engineering Arts Mathematics Lab. Has created a wonderful lab for students to engage in all kinds of hands-on learning and computer science, engineering, and digital literacy skills. Last year, pre-pandemic, we were awarded a Project Lead the Way grant. And in addition to being awarded the Project Lead the Way grant, what we realize now is the district would benefit greatly from having this position not solely be about professional development and support to other teachers, but also to provide teaching to students. If we have, if this position is a .5 teaching position, what that means is that we could conceivably create additional time for grade-level teachers to collaborate with one another. So the job description that you have in front of you, also reviewed by the attorney, focuses on this position, delivering the curriculum and instruction for Project Lead the Way. That's not year-long, those are 10-week modules. Then teaching children digital literacy and computer science skills. It's a .5 position still, but rather than just supporting adults, which is incredibly important, there's a big focus on working directly with children. And so that is what I'm asking the school committee to approve this evening. And certainly, our current instructional technology specialist is qualified for the position. And if they're interested in the position, would certainly, this is, this is the job that they would fill, but that's, that's the individual would need to decide if this is a position that they wanted.
And you mentioned the Project Lead the Way grant is 10-week modules, so would it be understood by the person filling this position, kind of what the longevity is? I mean, a grant isn't guaranteed. Yeah, how would that work?
Yeah, no, I wasn't very clear then. So because the position, this would replace an existing position. The person in the existing position is qualified to fill this position. It's essentially a right of first refusal. It's just saying, we need to, we've had that position for, if I just finished seven years, you've had that position for almost eight years, as well as technology coaches. My recommendation is that, that this is a teaching position now, that you maintain two tech coaches and you, so it's funded in the operating budget, it is not grant-dependent. The grant just is about curriculum. It's about part of what we would be teaching, but only 10 weeks, and the remaining, it's a .5 position, so half a week each week, but the remaining time would be about integrating instruction with what's happening in regular classrooms, so connecting to what's being taught in the grade-level classrooms and teaching computer science and digital literacy, for which there is a framework and there are standards.
Got it.
I really think this is a good move to make. At the time that we, you know, eight years ago when we were just getting started, it made sense to have that strategy of part-time, you know, teachers, someone within the teaching body who could help their peers. And we've come such a long way since then, not only just our fluency and technology at both schools, but also going through a pandemic that required everyone to have a crash course in utilizing technology and our one-to-one computing. So it just seems to make a lot of sense. My only question is that the, currently the halftime technology integrationist serves one school, Hadley Elementary School, will the new full-time position serve both schools?
So it's still a halftime position, and it would start, it's still a halftime position, Humira, so it's exactly the same in terms of time and budget impact, and it would be focused on Hadley Elementary School. Now, that doesn't mean that going forward, because Project Lead the Way, the grant that we have is through grade six, I want to say. I mean, technically, they call middle school starting in grade six, but it's for the elementary school. But personally, I would like to see the district be a Project Lead the Way district, so that these modules and this learning goes all the way through 12th grade, which it does, and then we could look at in future budgets cycles, expanding the position to do something similar at Hopkins Academy.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay, you would just need to approve the job description in that place.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the job description for instructional technology specialist teacher? All in favor? Great, excellent. Finally, we have the review of public health data.
So I'm going to speak to this, if that's okay, because I didn't pull the weekly dashboard up, but I assure you, I almost have it memorized to you. So we're down definitely in what used to be called in our old world, that yellow, right? We only, but remember our green, yellow, orange, red back in August had to do with Harvard's recommendations, and green was less than one in terms of average daily incidence rate per 100,000. And between one to nine would be yellow. Hampshire County rates have been steadily dropping. Every single week, we see that they're coming down, both in terms of average daily incidence and in terms of testing positivity, which I believe the last time I updated it, it was about .27%, 0.27. It was very low, and it had come down from the previous week, and the average daily incidence rate had also come down. The best news, which isn't on that graph, I think in general in Massachusetts and the Northeast, it's wonderful that New England is leading the way in vaccinations across the entire country, and I believe Massachusetts is fourth in the nation. I think maybe Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont might be ahead of us, some other New England states, but we're talking only by like less than a percent. I mean, New England is all so close in terms of the percentage of population fully vaccinated. And that is really a tremendous game changer. As the public might see in every weekly newsletter, I try to provide people with information on how they can get vaccines. And we're having a vaccine clinic this Friday at Hopkins Academy for students who are eligible. Hadley Public School students ages 12 and up who would like to get vaccinated. If you did not see that in the weekly newsletter, certainly you can email me directly, and I will gladly provide you, any parent or family with that information. So good news in the county. Good news, certainly in our district, we have a, the vast majority of our faculty and staff are fully vaccinated. We have recently, I think it's worthwhile, because parents are probably thinking, goodness gracious, you sound so upbeat, and yet I got three emails from you last week about positive cases. So we did see a kind of a combination of community, kind of what appears to be a localized community outbreak. And what I really appreciate is that this had to do with a community kind of a community sports organization, and I have to say, I think that what worked, what showed, what worked so well, and I'm very sad that anybody is tested positive for COVID and has to deal with that physical distress and that stress. But essentially through pool testing, we were able to pick up an asymptomatic positive. And then when, when we can do that, and community organizations that also are connected to the asymptomatic, asymptomatic positive, take all the right steps, all the right community health measures, that's what stops massive community transmission. So I am sad that anybody is ill, but I do want to say it is a testament, testimony to, a testament to the system working, right? So what pool testing can do, and I also strongly encourage families to consider signing up for pool testing, and I expect that we will continue doing this in the fall, is it allows us to identify folks that otherwise wouldn't be identified, right? Asymptomatic positive people. And then to identify all of the close contacts for those people, and to limit the likelihood that we have greater spread. So that's what happened this past week, and of course, we'll get our pool testing results from this week, probably tomorrow.
I appreciate the framing, Annie. It's good to know that what you had hoped would, would work seems to have worked in terms of an initial alert, and it, and it sounds like really great responsible communication from the other organization, and I'm glad that, that those things came together.
Yeah, they did perfectly. And I would say, I've, I've heard, and I understand this, I, sometimes I hear people say, it's all this testing. This is what the problem is, but I just need people to remember that the testing doesn't make people positive, right? The testing identifies people who are positive. Without the testing, they would just be interacting with others. And it can feel like, wow, if the school weren't doing that testing, we wouldn't have all this disruption. And sometimes people even say to me, it just feels like it was safer before all this testing. And what I've said is, it wasn't safer. We might have been ignorant, but we certainly weren't safer. And the safety comes from knowing, right, and then taking the appropriate action. So, and I appreciate all the community support in, when, when this happens.
Great, great.
If I may, I just want to also express condolences on the part of the school committee to the Ring family. Scott Ring is, was such an incredible supporter of the boosters and the, the schools. His four daughters went through our school system, and his passing due to this terrible disease is something that just breaks so many community members' hearts. I want to urge people to contribute to the fund for the families, the medical expenses that the family has incurred. And you can find that by just searching for Help for the Ring Family on GoFundMe, or just contact me if you're interested. I will share with you that information. But I, I, I'm not close friends with the family, but it really struck me when I read a post from Carrie Ring a couple of weeks back, when she was pleading with community members to consider getting vaccinated. Because, you know, just asynchronous, asymptomatic or symptomatic cases in the community, just touching that one person who might catch it and not have a fate like this is not worth it to me, and I think to us. So I urge everyone to consider that to be the case. I'm really heartened that school kids between 12 and 15 can now get vaccinated. Both my youngest have gotten their first shot. So thank you for hosting that clinic, and I urge others to, to look into that.
Thank you for mentioning the Ring family, Humira. Thank you very much. Our hearts do go out to them, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And I just want to make sure folks give credit where credit is due. Emma Dragon, no surprise, superhero superstar, is the one that's bringing the vaccine clinic to Hadley.
I have one quick question unrelated to the vaccine. But to pool testing, how does that work over the summer? Are we able to just pause the program and then potentially start it up again in the fall?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Yes, thank you, Humira, for our condolences to the Ring family. I think we, we all have are thankful for being able to hear from them and understand where they are, but I, I know that I want them to know that we are all thinking about you and have you in our thoughts and in our prayers. All right. We moved the first item, reorganization. I think that was our last item, Annie, before we move into reports. All right, so we'll move then into reorganization of the committee. This is something we do annually. We talked about this last meeting. Typically, right after election, we establish the chair, the vice chair, and then we have subcommittees for which we each give different reports for the various functions that we serve on either individually or as, as two of us, and those subcommittees include policy subcommittee, finance subcommittee, the capital planning subcommittee, the collaborative representatives. And then, of course, our warrants and our payroll signees, which we need, excuse me, we need two people to do that. Thankfully, those are digital signers at this point in time. We no longer need to come in and flip through all of this stuff physically. We can do it online. So we'll start that process. First, election of chairperson. This is a nomination process. I, I have really enjoyed serving as the chair for this school committee for a number of years. I've learned so much, and I really enjoy working with all of you. I would like to nominate Humira to serve in this role for the coming year. I, I want to mention that I'm coming into, this is the last year of my current three-year term, and I do not intend to rerun. As I, my child is exiting the Hopkins Hadley system, and I would welcome in the future additional participation from parents and family members and other town residents who would be welcome to participate in this process that is so valuable. So with that, in my last year, I would love to nominate Humira to serve as our chairperson.
I don't know if I can, but I would love to second it. I think that, Humira, you bring great perspective and great leadership and diligence to the committee, and I, I would appreciate you in that role. Nobody else has anything before.
I would be remiss without saying, I, I, Humira, I have valued your input over the years. You've been on here longer than I have, longer than all of us. And you have worked so hard, so diligently and effectively, often in the background. And I really appreciate that about you. I think none of us do this for, surely not for the pay, and surely not for the accolades, but I think that you're, you know, you have continuously just furthered initiatives that, and delivered on those results. And so as to qualifications, as Tara was saying, absolutely, I, I just, I would feel so confident and, and I would welcome having, seeing you in that role.
I just want to say one more thing too, Heather. Thank you for being in that role for the past few years, because you did step in so beautifully, and you've been an amazing leader and communicative and keeping us on track and just in general, keeping the, the meetings running and, and everything. I, I've lost my words, but thank you for your.
I've really enjoyed it. I, I recommend this, being part of this committee to anyone. If anyone is watching this, and I, I don't know if folks watch this after the fact, but I, you know, this is such a valuable process committee. I, I have welcomed our dialogues. I have, you know, been honored to be. I, I have welcomed our dialogues. I have, you know, been honored to be your, your chair for the years that I have and really will do look forward to it. I've loved the conversations with all of you. And I, I really value that we are all professionals and treat each other as professionals. And we may not always agree, and that's fine, you know, actually, that's welcomed. I love that we are able to dialogue through where we aren't all in agreement and really come to a realization of where we may need to be. And I've seen folks change throughout this process. I myself have changed throughout this process. So I thank you all for that. All right. Well, it sounds like I've made a motion and Tara has seconded it. So may we vote on that? On, so motion.
Before voting, I just want to make sure that Paul and Ethan, you are on board with this nomination. I, if, if everyone on this team is deserving and capable, and I would get behind any one of you as the chair. And I, I just want to make sure that there's, that, that you all are good. Or if, if anyone is interested in taking that role, I'd be happy to throw my support behind you as well. I want to make sure that we are all, all into this decision.
I think you'd be great, Humira, if you, if you're willing to do it. Yeah, if you can serve it. You do a very, very good job. I mean, you're clearly very engaged on these issues. It's just, I know it's a big ask, so you know, as we go through the other ones, the vice chair, I've been serving as vice chair. Heather, you've been doing it so competently. I don't think I've done, done anything as in the vice chair role. So whomever takes over that vice chair role, whether it's me, you know, just know that we're a team and we can support you.
Sounds great to me. Let's do it.
Great. Thank you. I accept the nomination, if that's required at all.
Yeah.
Thanks, Humira.
Thank you.
All right, vice chair slash secretary. Let's see. So yes, Paul, you are currently in this role. I, I would nominate you to continue serving in this role.
Seeing that I don't exactly do much for it, I'm happy to continue not doing much for it. So I, I mean, in all seriousness, the capital planning subcommittee is the one that I've put more time into. So again, Heather, you've really done a good job. Annie takes the notes, the secretary, and so I'm happy to continue serving in that role. So basically I'd be your backup, Humira. If you're out, I'll, I'll chair the meetings.
Great. Thank you, Paul.
Sure. But again, if, if somebody else wants to step up and do that, I'm happy to step aside as well.
If you're happy to stay in that role, Paul, I'm happy to. Thank you both.
I co-sign that. That works.
All right. Next, we have our policy subcommittee. So currently on the policy subcommittee are Humira and Tara, correct? And you want to tell us a little bit about what the policy subcommittee does? You just met.
We did. And you know, we had an exhaustive review of the entire policy manual a few years back now. And rather than saving it to one big project, we decided that we would take a little bit, a piece at a time and just make sure that we were current on all of our policy manual sections. And as urgent things came up, then we would, you know, add that to the mix as well. So generally, it's half an hour dovetailing an existing meeting. So you're not taking additional time out and meeting in person, these Zoom meetings right before or after have made it really easy. I would, I would imagine that that would continue.
I'm happy, I don't want to hog, certainly, but I'm happy to continue on it. It, I, I enjoy doing the policy meetings and I do feel like, you know, I maybe haven't been able to put my weight in on it. This past year, we did stop for quite some time because COVID took, took a lot of our time and effort. So we didn't, we didn't meet as frequently as, as we normally would. I'm happy to continue it. I like it. I'd love to continue it. But if somebody else really, really wants it, then I'm, I'm happy to step aside too.
I'd also like to say that that is a subcommittee role that I have valued. I didn't always value it. I was part of the, the, the group that had done that big review that one year. Oh, my gosh, that nearly killed us. But, but I really do view the, the review of policies as a key way to think about how we look at our, our structural systems. And I really appreciate this time around, seeing it anew with those fresh eyes. So I wouldn't mind staying in that role.
I would be happy to have you both continue in that role. Ethan, Paul, that sounds good to you.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Thank you both. I also, I served in this role a few years back and I really enjoyed it. And it was interesting from, you know, the legal perspective to get some of those updates. But then, but at the time, we had a changing landscape with, you know, legalization of marijuana and having to revisit some of the substance abuse and all of those kinds of things. So it was interesting looking at the policies through the light of some of the current events and things changing in our state. All right. Next, finance committee. So Ethan, you currently serve on that. I know I used to. I don't think I still do because Ethan, you've, you've attended those meetings. Typically, finance committee serves with the, what they call the tri-board, which is the, the select board and the finance committee and the school committee representatives. We try not to have more than two of us at those tri-board meetings. Actually, I think maybe it's just one. Annie, that, I can't remember.
Usually, yeah. A quorum would be three, but Ethan, Ethan is our, he's a regular.
A regular. That's, yep.
I, I'm, I'm happy to stay on it, happy to, to continue going to the tri-board meetings. Never a dull moment.
I'm good with that.
Unless somebody wants to.
If you ever need a backup or you need to reach out to somebody, I'm always happy to assist if you can't make something. But I'm absolutely happy to have you stay on.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you, Ethan. All right. Next, we have appointment of capital planning subcommittee. I believe, Paul, this has been you in the role, especially with the fields project as being part of that.
And I'm happy to continue at that role. Folks, as you said, I know, we just talked to Carlos and and Carlos's to do is to start talking about the phase two field. So it makes sense. I'm working on that to be on the capital planning committee as well.
And then phase three with the lights, right? Like that's just, you know, that's.
We talked about lights, a million dollars and lots of grief by the neighbors later, maybe.
Wouldn't be on all the time.
That's true. That's true.
I'd be happy to have you continue to serve in that role, Paul.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Then the appointment of the collaborative representative. Humira, you have served in this role for a couple of years and it's, I don't know if you want to describe the collaborative and their services?
Yes, the collaborative is a comprised of member districts in the area who are what's the best way to describe this? It's a state legislated thing. So a member of each school committee appoints a member to the collaborative board. So the board has 20 to 30 people representing all the member districts that it serves. That number is probably way inflated, but I can tell you that the CES role has been really interesting to learn from other districts. What are the challenges that they're facing? And also to see some of the services that a member districts have been utilizing. Hadley has enjoyed being able to utilize a number of those shared services. You know, when you, when you need a, a part-time or less than part-time occupational therapist or speech therapist, you're able to go to CES and utilize those services rather than having to hire your own. And they provide a number of different trainings and topics that are timely and the kind that, you know, you can't necessarily afford to get the leading expert on digital literacy or, or on being able to tell the difference in, in news sources as, as was the question back in 2016 or 2017. So as a board member, you not only get to see and understand what kinds of services we can enjoy, but you can also influence how CES thinks about bringing on additional services, training and staff to serve our member districts. So I would strongly urge you to, I, I've really enjoyed the role. I am partly thinking like, maybe I should hold on to it. But realistically, as, as a chairperson, I imagine that I'll be adding onto my role a number of responsibilities that I haven't had. So I'm willing to part with it for anyone who'd like to enjoy that.
I'm happy to take on that role unless there's somebody who really wants it. I've been very intrigued by this for years and definitely very, it's, it's always insightful when they come and present about their services. And it seems like every time we get some new either, you know, idea out of it, service out of it, or kind of we build on that. So happy to do it unless somebody else would like the role.
I am supportive of you doing it and seeing as you've just announced this as your last year. I think this is a good opportunity to take advantage of that. I'm interested in the future, but I, you know, where we're at right now, I think it's, it's only fair and right that, that you step into that role. And in the future, I'll have my opportunity. I've got more years.
I appreciate that, Tara.
Okay. Great at that role, Heather. And those, the meetings are by Zoom, super, you know, I, I imagine that they'll stay that way. So I guess I, I see you as a good fit for that role.
Great. Thank you. Well, and I, I would like to stay involved on one of these subcommittees. So I appreciate that. All right. Signing bills for payroll. Who currently is the primary and who's the alternate for that?
My primary.
Tara's the primary and Ethan is the alternate.
Yes, I have had to do nothing.
Well, I've been doing it for five years now, Ethan. So if, if you'd like to take it on, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to keep it if nobody wants it. But I'm also very happy to pass the torch if anybody would like it. And it's just as Heather said, Chris sends everything electronically. And sometimes you'll get five and sometimes you will literally get 25 emails from Chris saying, please sign these. And I do my best to try to be pretty timely in them, getting them done within a day or two. And he'll send you reminders if you don't. But I'm happy to pass it along to anybody or willing to keep it if nobody wants it. Either way, it's fine by me.
I'm happy to step in and help. I mean, whether primary or alternate, five years is long enough. I think you paid your dues, Tara, enough, Tara, yeah, so.
I, it's not for me to suggest the school committee do anything. I would say it might be if Ethan, if you have an interest, certainly going to the tri-board. It's a logical place to review the warrants because what you're doing is reviewing every single expense that the school department has and every bill that we pay. It's riveting, as Tara would point out.
Ethan, you want to swap and you be the prime?
That, I, I was going to say, I'm happy to, to, to play that role for, and, and take that off Tara's plate. She's done a great job.
I'm happy to have Paul as the alternative.
Paul, it's a great role.
That sounds good. And I know, Humira, you may need to step in on a couple of things too. I know Chris often gets me things that need to be reviewed or signed or whatever. So those will come to you. Great. Okay. Well, I think we've gone through then all of the reorg pieces. Uh, let's go to school committee reports. Collaborative. And actually, I should ask, Annie, should I turn it over to Humira?
Technically, yes. You have new chair. There you go.
The gavel tours. Passing the virtual torch.
Okay. And what that really means is that you might have to create a breakout room at the end of this, but you know how to do that.
Right. All yours. We're on 6A.
Okay, 6A. Well, first of all, I, I may make missteps and so, you know, mentor me in real time, Heather and Annie, in terms of how I go through this, but 6A CES reports, and that's me, Basir Dine. This last CES week was a very important one as we interviewed two finalists for the CES executive director role. And they were both extremely qualified candidates. One is serving in the interim role today and has for the last several months. She had been a previous employee at CES. And so she was coming back after serving as, I believe, a principal in an area school. And the other was also a very highly qualified candidate. It was a very difficult decision. We had town meetings to review video, video town meetings to review. We had their entry plans to review. And then we spent the better part of an hour interviewing them as a board. And I'm glad to say that we came out of that with a decision. And the new board member is a gentleman by the name of Dr. Todd Gazda. And I think that he's going to be spot on for this role. There was a lot of excitement about what he brings to the table. And if you have an interest, I'm happy to see what materials are available for publicly sharing with my school committee colleagues. But that's the big news is that CES has a new executive director. And I believe they will begin imminently. Okay, so moving on, the next item on the agenda is 6B. And that is finance. Ethan?
Not, not a whole lot to update on finance, except that we did get a budget passed for the town at the, at the annual town meeting. And the schools did get a very nice shout out from the select board due to us being able to submit a level funded budget. So I think they were very happy because that obviously helped them with their budget work this year. So it was nice to, to hear them kind of show a little bit of appreciation.
What a nice acknowledgement. And I just want to shout out to Annie for her careful stewardship of that finance role and, and helping us present that level budget. And also to our finance and capital liaisons for helping make that possible. I think it's a real testament to the last two, three years. And so in the next item, 6C, policy.
So I'll speak to that. So we just had one, one small, a small, small, a small policy to review. So the preferred vocational school. And it's my understanding that this is common practice amongst districts that have a preferred vocational program that they use. And so the suggestion that was put in place by the school attorney is that we designate as a district, the Smith Vocational as our preferred vocational school. And there's a limited exception on where that would, that would not be the preferred school as if a student were look, to look into an area of area or career or shop class that is not available at Smith Folk, then they would be able to look into alternatives. Otherwise, that would essentially leave the superintendent at her discretion to approve in that case if the shop were not available or whatnot. Otherwise, this would be our preferred vocational school. And again, this, this was reviewed by the attorney and came at the recommendation as well. So this is something that we don't currently have in place that we'd be looking to adopt.
Great. This is a new, new policy entirely?
Yes.
It is. New and apparently widely adopted in, throughout Massachusetts. So not new in general, but something that we haven't had. And is it correct, Annie, that this is not necessarily up for a first reading, that you'd like us to vote on this tonight?
Yeah, because by waiting, so by not having a school, and Tara, thank you for that introduction. Just one little point of clarity, the attorney recommends the school committee have a preferred The attorney recommends the school committee have a preferred school. Does not matter to the attorney which one it is, does not have a preference as to which school it is. When you don't have one, students can go anywhere. And the school department is responsible not only for the tuition, which typically are comparable, but for transportation. And so if you wait to adopt the policy, you have students who say, well, I'd like to go to Pathfinder, I'd like to go to Franklin, I'd like to go to Smith. Not only is it the tuitions, but we have to provide transportation to all of those places. So there could be a time in the future that the school committee could determine they want to revisit the policy, but there really is no upside to waiting on adopting the policy. Because until such time as you have designated a preferred school, then any school that a student elects, not only would it be the tuition, but it's also the transportation that has to be paid for.
So that's helpful. And I was curious why the harsh language. I mean, I see the last sentence a little bit frank. But basically what it's saying is superintendent can disapprove if they have not applied to Smith Folk. Doesn't say they have to go to Smith Folk. Because they could go to those, they could apply to Smith Folk, get in, but it could go to those other ones and get in. And we would still have to pay for them to get there.
Now, at that point, so what would happen in that case? If a student applied to a vocational school, other than the designated or preferred vocational school, the student applied to another vocational school, by disapproving the application, what it means is that the district would say, no, we provide transportation and pay tuition to this vocational school over here, and they offer that shop. Now, what students sometimes can do and have done in Western Massachusetts, where they're typically not wait lists for vocational schools and we have declining enrollment, is that if they're, really their heart is set on going to a different school. Majority of our families do just choose Smith Folk naturally, which is probably why you've never designated anything. But if a student really wanted to go elsewhere, they could apply under school choice. The vocational school is not going to get the non-resident vocational tuition, which is more around, let's say, $20,000 per tuition. They're not going to get that. They would get school choice, $5,000. They wouldn't get, if, if Smith Folk offered the exact, offered the same shop. Smith Folk doesn't offer the shop, then the school district not only must pay the tuition, but also provide the transportation. If it's a shop that is not offered.
Yeah, I understand. So a student applies to Smith Folk, gets in, applies to one of these other vocational, gets in, decides to go to the other one. Under workarounds.
And the shop, and the shop that the student has selected is offered at Smith Folk. Then this policy says, I would disapprove the application. Now, if that, let's say they went, they went to go to Pathfinder.
That's not what it says, though. It says if the student does not apply, they can apply. It doesn't say they're obligated to go. Right? If a student does not apply to Smith Folk, the superintendent may disapprove. So they apply to Smith.
Right, so they apply to both, I'm sorry, then they, it's still, Smith Folk is a preferred vocational school. It's a preferred vocational school. If they're going to another vocational school, they're only, the reason that it matters is that they're going to that other school via school choice. So that vocational school would have to accept students under school choice. Many vocational schools do.
No, I get it. It's just, is there something magical about preferred that has a legal definition?
Yeah, once you designate the school, yes.
Then they're obligated to go. If they get into multiple vocational schools, including Smith Folk, they are obligated to go if they want to be, if they want us to pay non-resident tuition. They could go through school choice, but then we are not obligated to pay non-resident tuition? Is that what this?
Correct.
Okay, it just doesn't read like that. If this is a legal, legalese to try to protect us from that. Ostensibly, I'm assuming a lawyer wrote it. It just doesn't.
Yeah, the lawyer did write it. Yeah.
Because it just says they have to apply.
So the policy itself was written by the school attorney? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul, I'm seeing it the way you are too, that it just says, you've got to apply to Smith first before anything else. And if you don't, then you could disapprove. So, but it doesn't say anything about acceptance. So that, that might warrant a follow up.
I mean, it doesn't even say you have to apply first. You can apply to five of them. And as long as you've applied.
It does say you have to apply to Smith before applying to any other vocational school. So I read that as you gotta, you gotta do Smith first. However, that doesn't, it doesn't say anything about
Direct, yeah.
Acceptance, which I agree with you, Paul, that that's kind of left ambiguous here.
But I mean, so I get the point that we're trying to, we're trying to protect, to say that we support kids going to vocational schools. Thank you, Heather. Right before applying to other, they have to apply there. Yeah.
It kind of reads like, Annie, you could, you know, superintendent can only say no if the student didn't happen to apply to Smith first. That, that's how I read it. And I was, but it's a little more than that, right?
Sounds like it.
When a school committee designates a vocational school, then the expectation is that if the town is paying, or in this case, the school department is paying the tuition and providing the transportation for said vocational school, that that's where they would go. And what it protects the school committee from is again, not that we're trying to interfere. Smith does not offer the shop, then they would go, then they go wherever the shop is offered. But in the, if you don't designate, so you can have students who are going to Smith Folk, going to Franklin County Tech, going to Pathfinder, going to Dean potentially. You have to provide transportation for every single one of those destinations.
This is what I recommend. What, if I may, what, I understand, I think we all understand what the spirit of this policy is and what it's trying to avoid. And in light of that, the language may be clunky and perhaps could use another set of eyes based on this possible alternate way of viewing it. I would suggest that we consider passing it tonight as is. With the spirit that if anyone were to apply to a different vocational as far as Pathfinder or Franklin or, you know, even farther, that we would be on the hook for busing for those situations unless we pass something tonight. And that, maybe Annie, you could review it with Fred and just clarify the language. Because if we need to confer as a policy committee and refine and bring it back to us, we can fix it. Does that make sense?
Before we do that, it does make sense. I do have a question, though, just about immediate impact. So is application an annual process? And would we have current students that are impacted by this? Like, is it?
Oh, because prior, because you don't have a policy. So there's nothing to, to, you don't have a, you don't have a policy right now. So anybody who's applied to another Volk school and had that application approved prior to you designating one, then they continue in that vocational school.
Okay.
It's not, it's going forward.
I wasn't sure of like what, if there are literally like active applications going on now for the upcoming academic year, I would hate for this to be confusing for anyone.
Yeah, so active and approved, and it would not affect any approved application.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So do I hear a motion to approve this preferred vocational school policy?
Seconded.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And so this will come back to us then for updated language that maybe is?
Or I will better explain why she feels strongly that the language should be what it is. So she writes the policies for school districts on designating vocational schools. So, great.
And you simply would say, if a student gets into Smith Folk and decides not to go there, then, right? Then the superintendent may disapprove. So that they're their choice. They've applied, they got in, and they choose not to go there. But then it's not our obligation to pay for their transit.
Yeah, I'll check in with her and come back.
Great. Thank you, Annie. And the last item, 6D, fields and capital. Paul?
Yeah, thank you. So be quick. Every year for the last couple of years, we've applied for the Massachusetts School Building Authority for redoing the girls locker room and Hopkins Academy and the vents, the AC, the HVAC system. We've been denied several times now and we were considering resubmitting. And frankly, I don't, as much as I think they're warranted to redo the girls locker room, I don't think, the feedback we get is we're not very competitive. But it's a very low priority national, in the state. And HVAC system, to be honest, we redone some of it with COVID funds. We're a victim of our own due diligence, right? We are, we keep our buildings up even though they're from the 50s and the 60s, the Hopkins Academy is. We keep that up very well. And so I think from the MSBA's perspective, we're probably low on the priorities. So what we're thinking about is not applying again this year, considering taking a look and see what we might be able to do for next year, whether we target in on one or both of those or have a larger discussion and have this bigger conversation about how much we keep putting into this 50, 60, 70-year-old building and whether a whole new building is a conversation to be had. And obviously, that's a huge conversation. It's a very expensive conversation. But maybe, you know, as you keep putting money into a used car and you have to decide at some point, you stop doing that, maybe it's time to have that conversation again. I know these are past conversations folks have gone through about having buildings or whether you regionalize with another nearby school that's also, you know, might be of a similar or smaller size. So those are the kinds of big conversations, I think, we should start having, start engaging with at a small level and build up. But obviously, that's not going to happen in the next few weeks when these applications are due to MSBA by the end of June.
Thanks, Paul. I appreciate that. I, I also appreciate the fact that you've tried. Sometimes the first time just, you know, doesn't, doesn't work in the second and third. But if you're getting the consistent feedback, we're learning from this. It's clear that a different approach may be necessary. And this is a conversation that's come up before. Our buildings are really old. They could really use an update. So whether we upgrade, you know, wholly upgrade our building or look at new strategies, that's a strategic conversation that should be had. And I wonder, Annie, is that the kind of thing that we might devote part of a retreat? We've had retreats in the past. I'm wondering what cycle are we on for retreats? And whether it makes sense to have that strategic conversation at a retreat?
I would say yes. And normally, we've tried to do something to come together every year. And again, just this last, usually over the summer. And this last summer, I mean, everything this year just revolved around trying to get buildings open and figuring out COVID-19. And I don't, I don't foresee that being an issue going forward, hopefully. So certainly, that and we've also talked about maybe having, how do we engage the community on some of the topics that are a priority for the school committee and for other members of the community? So definitely, we can do that. We can start thinking about an MSBA application, what we really want it to include going forward, how we need to reach out to people and engage stakeholders. Because some of you folks, I don't know, was anybody, well, Huma or Heather, I don't know if you were here for the elementary project. If you were, you know, it is a heavy, heavy lift. Not impossible, but it's a heavy lift. It's, it requires a big communication plan.
It was before my time. But I've seen other area school districts and heard other communities really struggle through that decision. It is a big lift. So we would obviously, we have to be very thoughtful about whether we were willing to undertake that project. And certainly, when I look at the Hopkins Academy School, I think, I think that it's, one way or another, either, either replacing and wholly updating or, or regionalizing, it's, it's a decision point that we have to, have to come to. And it would be a conversation that, that the community would have to participate in. Any other thoughts or comments from additional few members on this?
Yeah, I had one. I know I've always valued seeing that capital plan that is like the 10-year plan that kind of has major investments that we've talked through, but also the forecasting of when we think things are going to break based on their lifespan, you know, like buses and things like that. I would, I think it would be helpful to understand if there is such a thing for our facility to know, you know, kind of like you know the length of, how long a roof is supposed to last. You know how long certain systems are supposed to be current or when they would need updating. That might be helpful to understand our roadmap of, you know, if that's the used car, kind of what's our service plan as we, as we know it currently, looking ahead?
That's a really good point.
Yeah, I would love having that be part of our retreat discussion.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And now we're on item seven, announcements. Are there any announcements from the school committee members?
As I say, I apologize, I'm going to have to ring off pretty soon, just a few minutes. I know we have a couple more items.
Okay, I do have a quick announcement, and that is that the organization, that the initiative Hadley Learns is celebrating its one-year anniversary by honoring George Floyd and others like him who have lost their lives due to all the factors that influence how our society views safety. And so the theme of the next two months, the summer series, June and July, is justice and community safety. The first month in June, we'll look at history to present and have some very interesting podcasts and articles to read up on for that, to have a small community discussion on Zoom. And then the second is on looking forward. What both the police community as well as other towns that are looking at public safety differently, what they're talking about and doing so that we are informed as a community about both of those different aspects. So check that out at hadleylearns.com. Okay, so I believe we have, we have action items. And item eight, approval of the minutes of April 26th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Excellent. And approval of AP warrants for April 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Right. Hi.
All abstained.
Great, thank you, Heather. And approval of warrants for April 2021. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve warrants.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Is this the one Ryan's saying?
Yep, this is, yes.
Thank you, Paul. We already approved the job description for instructional technology specialist teacher. We already approved the policy. And approval of fiscal year 22, one-year contract extension for.
So we need executive session and then we need to come out and vote and open.
Great.
I think I apologize, I do need to run it. I don't know, folks heard, my son had broke his hand the other day. And so there's some issue I got to tend to.
Oh, no.
Paul, I hope he feels better.
Yeah, well, we'll see the surgeon tomorrow, so. Hopefully, you might, yeah, right before graduation.
Annie, this is Annie? Oh, dear. Oh, well, wish him well for us.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I gotta run. Have a good night, folks.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Bye, Paul.
Huma, I'm going to make you the host so that you can make, I don't know how you want to do this, but we just need to have a breakout room.
Okay, go ahead.
So it's us, I'm just going to make you the host. And then we come back to Hadley Media and our guest.
Okay, great. So can I have a motion to move into executive session? And I'll make this breakout room.
Motion.
Seconded.
Okay, great. And Annie, is that all we need or do we need to?
I'm sorry, can you just read that? You're moving to go into executive session. Heather, you made the motion.
Motion to move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to reconvene in open session.
Great. And do I hear a second?
Seconded.
And all in favor, our roll call vote, please. And all in favor? Our roll call vote, please.
Roll call.
Clash?
Yes.
Bruger?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
And Fasidin, yes. Okay, great. And we will resume momentarily. I'm, I've made a breakout room. All right, so we are back in open session after having an executive session. And I I wonder if there's a motion to approve a 1.5% increase for the fiscal year 22 one-year contract extension with UPS EU.
So moved.
So here. Terrific. All in, roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Humira, yes. Okay, Annie. I think we're, we've concluded that one. Thank you, team, for that. It's always nice to reward our hardworking employees for the good work that they are doing. So thank you, colleagues who work with us here at Hadley Public Schools. All right, Annie, is that it for us? Do we just adjourn at this point?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Seconded.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Oh, this is gonna take me some time to get used to this. So thank you for bearing with me. Appreciate your support through all of it. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.